Of our three graders, two of the ones that we have are slated for the auction. And so, we had to give those up to the auction company to get ready for the sale next week. The other one, at the same time, the other one went down with a busted seal, I think. So, it's in, and it's under warranty, so Caterpillar's fixing it, and it's in their shop in Montgomery. So, we have zero graders right now. So, this is one that we're recommending is available now for us to go ahead and purchase. So, that's why we're asking you to suspend the rules and go ahead and do that. And they're offering, the manufacturer is offering financing in arrears, so we won't have to pay a dime until after we sell our grader next year. We've got it all worked out. We're, McKenzie and I have been working together and making sure that, you know, everything looks good on the financial side of it. So, that's our request for that. And then, third, under new business...
Question on the grader?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Please. The financing on it, you said at the beginning, what is actually the finances, they're going to finance it for?
They're giving us 2.9%.
2.9%?
Yeah.
For how many years?
Five years.
Five years?
Yes, sir. In arrears, so we don't owe anything until we sell our grader next year. And we're also planning to put in the budget for all of the proceeds from the sale of that grader to go toward this grader. In other words, the payment may only be $50,000, but whatever we get for that old grader, we're going to pay every bit of it toward this new grader.
New grader?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and that will be reflected in our budget for next fiscal year.
Anything else on that?
And a third item under new business is we are requesting $60,000 from the general fund for spot leveling. We've discussed this. Maybe this should be under current business. It was not on my agenda request for last meeting, but I think we did discuss it a little bit. But $60,000 of that transferred from the general fund for spot leveling on several roads where we have some really rough spots that need to be leveled. County Road 7707, 7708, 3306 down in Spring Hill, and 3339. So, we also have a memo there in your agenda package detailing that request. And we are asking that you go ahead and suspend the rules and approve that one as well, so we can get the ball rolling on that. And if there's no questions there, that's all we had under new business. Under current business, we do have the application resolution for you to approve tonight to apply for, once again, to pave County Road 2256 and to resurface County Road 7749. And we also have, under current business, the award of the County Road 4417 resurfacing project. And that memo is in your agenda package as well. And we'll be recommending award to the low bidder who is Wiregrass Construction in the amount of $74,760. One more thing, I'll just let you know in case you're wondering what this is. I gave you all a copy of the, the Chalkahatchee P. and Yaw Rivers Watershed Management Authority has a couple of high-tech rain gauges in the county, and they're kind enough to share that information with us after every month. So, I wanted to just show you this, just for your information, and so you'll have some data to give to any of your constituents when they ask you why our dirt roads are in such bad shape. Everybody knows it's been raining, seems like incessantly for the last two months, but this kind of gives you some data to go along with that. We, just in the first two months of this year, we received 18 inches of rainfall in the Troy Gage. And just for the month of February, we got almost nine inches, which is over two times the average or the normal amount for that month. So, as you can see, I attached that as well, that information as well, about the monthly averages there. So, we, obviously, when you get that kind of rainfall, especially if it's slow and consistently spread out over a period of time, it just soaks the dirt roads, and if they have any amount of traffic on them, the result is not good. But hopefully, the warmer weather's coming now, and we are getting some more rain this week. But we're out there, and if we can get this new grader and get our other two graders in, hopefully, they'll be in by next week. So, we'll be full force, and we're going as fast as we can on these dirt roads, and we'll pull back out of it. It's just going to take a little bit of time. So, we just ask everybody's patience.
Where is he?
That's all we had.
Questions? Yes, sir?
Yeah. Russ was down there, about Hardee's on, in Brunden. So, Master Fergs has been down there a little over a month. That belongs to us? I can tell from where I'm at, sitting right there in the corner, they've been there much.
It could be our boom mower. Is it a limb cutter? Boom mower? Yes, sir, it probably is ours.
Why would we leave it out there like that? Let's ask for somebody to take it if we want it.
Well, generally, we try to park our equipment out in a good visible location, you know, near a busy intersection like that, so people are less likely to steal it. I mean, the idea, our philosophy's always been, if you park something off on a, you know, a remote area without much traffic, then it's easier for someone to vandalize it or steal it without getting caught. So, normally, we try to park those in a visible location, you know, where somebody might not be quite as bold to try to vandalize it.
We were talking about, or you were just talking about being, all the rainfall behind with the graders?
Yes, sir.
I'm assuming y'all were riding and making lists of priority areas and areas that are worse than others. Can you share some of that with us? Kind of, I mean, not right now, unless you just know it off the top of your head, but kind of, you know what I mean? Like, we got a bad area here, we already know about it, because I got a list a mile long, and instead of us blowing you up with those lists, you might say, hey, we found all these issues, and we just fill in the things that are important to us that we found.
Right. I mean, we prioritize the work orders, you know, because...
Well, that's what we're trying to keep, and we can do it, and I can do it that way. What I was trying to keep doing is calling in 20 work orders and then each commissioner, because obviously, we've had the hardest rain you talked about, and then we've had a cycle with little or no graders running. I mean, I don't mind calling in, but...
Well, if you've got a list that you want to share with me, you know, that you've had issues with, or that you've had calls about, or whatever, you know, we can work that in and prioritize those. But what we've done is, we've prioritized the usual problem areas, the high-traffic roads, because that's where you have most of your problems with the, you know, when the road bed gets saturated, and then if you've got any traffic on there, it just kind of, you know, causes more problems. But we prioritize those and the work orders, and beyond that, you know, if we know of any roads that get particularly bad because of, you know, soil conditions, or terrain, or whatever's there, those are on our radar, and we're kind of systematically attacking them in that way. But other than that, we're just, we're going around the county systematically, you know, like we normally do. So, it's just widespread, you know, the problems are. But if you've got some specific roads that need attention, if you have a list, please share that with me, and we will make sure that they're prioritized.
Anything else? Commissioner, you got anything?
I did call and put in a request, and I went out there myself. It rained on White Water Road, Little White Church, and I came to a conclusion, and one of you, in your case, your supervisor came to the same conclusion. It's a low area right there, and the water rising out the creek, over the bridge, coming from the hill, and all of this puddle right there to keep them from going to church. And I tried to my best to tell them, ain't nothing we can do about this right now.
True. That's right.
Because the church is in a low area, and this is where the water's going to set. And we're trying, we finally got, came to a conclusion with some of the deacons and, you know...
And you're talking about on the paved road, not the dirt road, but the paved road where the double bridges are?
The double bridges.
Right. Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, just through natural processes in that wetland area in there and along the creek...
And when I was down there, the water was about maybe a foot deep. I'm glad I went on my pickup truck instead of my car.
Right. Yeah. It does overtop the road frequently there, but it, you know, doesn't get very deep, but and usually, the water that's flowing through there is not very swift. It doesn't have a high velocity, so it usually doesn't damage the road bed other than saturating it. But you don't get any scour or anything, you know?
It didn't cause any erosion or anything like that?
It just kind of backs up.
It just backs up, and they can't cross it. And it almost sometimes gets so high, it looked like it might go into, in the church, but I don't think it makes that far. That's where it's a little right.
Yeah, I think the only real solution there is to raise the elevation of the roadway up, and of course, you'd have to build new bridges there to do that, so it'd be a tremendously cost-prohibitive solution. Unfortunately, there's no low-cost or solution, or quick fix, or anything like that that I know of.
Is that it for this? That it? Commissioner, that it? I said, Mr. Johnson?
Do you have any kind of update on where we are on the EDA approving the plans we've been waiting on, on the last part of the A-road up there?
Right. They sent us back a notice that our certificate, we have an engineer certification and a county attorney's, or an owner's attorney's certification, which is sort of a title, clear title type of document. And whatever we submitted to them back before the end of the year, before the first of this year, I guess they finally figured out was not adequate. And so, I don't know if Allen's coming tonight or not, but I've been communicating with him about trying to figure out how to present to them something that is acceptable to prove to them that we have clear title for this road that has been a public highway for 100 years and has been a county road for 50. So, that's where we are right now.
Would you mind emailing me tomorrow whatever information, where they sent back saying what was wrong with it?
You and who?
I mean, who, if you want to say, but I, at the very least, I'd like a copy of it. I was going to pass it to Representative Allen, since he helped get that.
I'm sorry, I thought you...
Swear in the first place, I was just wanting to share that with him, because that's something he might want to give me a call on to help deal with some of this. But I'd like to know exactly how they worded what the problem was.
All right. Anything else for the engineer at this time? Thank you, Russ.
Thank you.
Yeah, Matt?
Only have one item under current business, and then just two really points of information, so I'll hit on those first, is just for your information, we are closely monitoring what's going on with the coronavirus. You know, we have a vested interest in, from two sides, not only from the county, but also from the university, and we've spent a considerable amount of time taking a look at that. We are looking possibly either later this week, or first of next week, to convene a group of our healthcare providers, just to kind of make sure we're ready if we have a case. We don't have any active cases now, but also to bring in our folks from Alabama Department of Public Health to help guide us with, you know, testing needs and all of that, if we have that come up. But it is something we're, you know, we're maintaining a close watch on, and there's all kind of information out there, and there's all kind of differing information out there. But we're trying to stay as closely, you know, to the issue as we can until there's some kind of solution to it. The only other thing, as far as just a general point of information, Commissioner Copeland asked me about this, we will be submitting a letter of intent to see if we can get this additional hazardous mitigation money to look at a new shelter, another shelter here in the county. We will submit the letter of intent and then see what they will fund with regards to some hazardous mitigation money that was not spent in the state over the Lee County tornadoes. The only other item I have under current business is to ask your approval on the, to expend the $1,500 for the hazardous mitigation plan resolution that was presented two weeks ago. Basically, we are working with the Southeast Alabama Development Authority and the South Central Alabama Development Authority to develop our hazardous mitigation plan for Division B, which is 10 counties in Division B. And each county will be responsible for paying $1,500 toward that particular plan. The remainder of the funds would come either from grant dollars or from the Southeast Alabama or South Central Alabama Development Authority, but we would need to approve expenditure of $1,500 toward this plan for them to develop a plan for Division B, which will include Pike County.
Questions?
Yes, I want to ask you that, is the SARA Center is involved with you all in COVID virus?
I have not spoke directly with them at this point in time, that they would be included in this, if we pull this group together. All of our healthcare providers would be, including, you know, not only the hospital, but SARA, as well as, you know, the Public Health Department. We'd also look at our, you know, folks that operate nursing homes and stuff like that, because certainly, our elderly are more susceptible to the virus than a lot of others are. And of course, we're bracing that no one will bring it back from spring break when they return next week.
That's what I was going to ask. That's what I was going to ask.
Well, we've tried to, you know, just as we've tried to, you know, we certainly, from a university perspective, just to give you just a brief update, you know, we've suspended all of our study abroad programs, we recalled all of our people that are working overseas. However, you know, when spring break occurred this past Friday, students went everywhere, you know, not only, some of them did go overseas, some of them were on cruise ships, and some of them are in Florida and wherever else it may be. So, we're just, like I said, we're bracing that hopefully, we will have none that will come back.
But you're aware of all those that left on spring break, you know?
Been left to go overseas. We're not aware of all those that may have gone to Florida, or some of them may have gone out to the West Coast, you know, because we don't, we just don't know that. All of those that traveled overseas, and most all of those that, you know, went on a cruise, you know, either we're aware of it, or either through those passports, we're aware that they've traveled outside of the United States.
If anything happened, would you please let the commission know right away?
If we have anything that develops next week, we will.
Okay.
Right now, just, and I think y'all probably noticed, there's the two, well, I think, there's the two cases up in Jacksonville, where the two nursing students had contact with a person over in Georgia, but there's not a confirmed case in Alabama yet. But we will keep you posted, and if it comes, if we don't have a meeting, I'll send you something by email or through McKenzie.
Thank you, Herb. Appreciate it. Does any commissioner have a report at this time?
I talked to McKenzie and I talked to Commissioner Johnson. How about the, about the jail?
Yes, sir.
And I mentioned it to you a little bit of it, that we need to have, after everything, come to a concrete meeting with the UTEC and the other elected officials. We need to sit down ourselves and talk to all our elected officials and let them know this is a one-time thing. You know, you better get it together right now, and this is it, when we sit at this table and make that vote. Won't be nothing, won't be nothing added.
Anything else? Okay. Administrative report, please?
Okay, the first item under my report is the Southeast Alabama Emergency Medical Services Council, which is what Chief Stevens talked to y'all about earlier. That'll be there. We can, I don't know if you request it, they go ahead and suspend the rules and vote on it, or if you can wait till the next time.
When's your next meeting?
It'll be probably before the next commission meeting. But no, definitely, we don't have to do anything special to approve it for us.
Well, if it will help us get a say-so in the matter, I think we ought to do that tonight, in fact, suit the commission.
Okay. The second item is personnel. If you'll notice in your package, we had a resignation in our office. Tomorrow will be her last day. At this point in time, I think we just want to try to work around the office and see if we can make some things work there before we move forward with doing anything. So, I don't want to request a replacement or anything right now for that position, if that's okay with all of you. If there are any questions on that?
Got a question?
Statement on that, from my perspective, I know she was doing a lot of our, getting our information out to the public, getting, you know, all the website stuff that we got and put out there, so that's one of the things that we don't want.
And I...
And I know you don't plan on letting that fall down through the product, but...
I have actually already been talking to Mr. Herb about maybe partnering with the university and getting us a graduate assistant to come in. I believe it's, what, $2,500 a semester usually?
Seventy-five hundred for the year.
Yeah, $7,500 for the year, about, let's see, and if we can get something to help with our social media calendar, that kind of things that she was handling. That's just a small portion of her job, but I think that would probably be best if we can try to find somebody with him, with his help, to handle some of that portion of it. And he and I will be talking about that, and hopefully, have something maybe that we can come back to you at the next meeting about, so that, I mean, for a couple of weeks, I think we can call her, or either I'll call her and badger her to please help us. I think she would do that, help us if we needed some help on doing some things there. Otherwise, the other work that she was doing, we're going to try to see how it can work with, including that, and somebody else in the office. I'm not saying I'm not going to come back to you, because it does cut our staff by even another person. It'll hurt with our office staff, but we're going to try to see what we can do and see if we can work something else out in there, in the office right now. And we'll come back to you once we know what we need to do moving forward for personnel there. If y'all don't have any more questions on that. The third item is some budget amendments. The first one, I had to give you all another copy and a kind of a change to the one that was in your budget. The first item, there was an oversight. We had a transfer in to the general fund, but we did not have it budgeted as a transfer out over the jail court cost fund, I meant jail court cost account. So, I'm just asking that we fix that, because our transfers in our budget need to match each other. It's the $125,000 that we've been doing there, and we just need that to match on that. The second item has to do with the surface leveling, that, the spot leveling, I'm sorry, that the engineer came to you all about. This would enable us to be able to give the $60,000 to gas tax fund to be able to get those jobs done, the leveling done, is those transfers. If y'all have any questions on that. The only item I believe that I have anything for under current business is going to be the surplus equipment from the sheriff's department. You have another copy of it in your agenda package. I talked to you about it last time, and it's just we need to approve for them to go and sell those items at auction. And I think that's all I have.
Any questions for McKenzie?
There's no question. Just the engineer here, I mean, things plus, and you need to add to that, too, if that chance.
Thank you. Our work session is now complete, and we will reconvene at 6:00 PM for our regular meeting.
Y'all give her a big hand. If you get hungry, there's food at Stips', and then we got Bee Grays', and we got Mama Goldberg's over here, so if you get hungry, they got plenty of food around.
All right, I just want to say thanks, everybody, for coming out. This is really cool that the community's doing this thing on the square. So, I'm going to start my set off with a Chris Stapleton song, and it's called "Baby, I Was Wrong." I know just how much it must have hurt, and I'll take it back. Won't you let me take it back? No, I told you that I don't love you. I'd be better off with someone new, but I'd take it back. Won't you let me take it back? Girl, you know that I still love you. And you know that I'm so alone. I don't know why I told you that I didn't need you. Can't you see that? Baby, I was wrong. You're it. You're cheating. I don't want to be it. That's right. All I want to do is touch your skin, yeah, yeah. If I had you right here, right now, I'd tell you, tell you, tell you, I'd tell you. Now, girl, you know that I still love you. And you know that I'm so alone. I don't know why I told you that I didn't need you. Can't you see that? Baby, I was wrong. You're shot! Thank you, y'all. This next song, uh, it's a song that Sturgill Simpson covered, and I'm a really big Sturgill Simpson fan, and this is called Long White Line. Won't be around this old town anymore for a long, long time. Gonna hit the road, start looking for the end of that white line. Gonna hit the road, start looking for the end of that long white line. When I woke up, my baby was gone. Without her, I ain't got no home. Gonna hit the road, start looking for the end of that long white line. Hit the road, start looking for the end of that long white line. Went to the bank to get my dough. I don't care where I go. This old rig is humming and rolling, she's doing fine. If somebody wants to know what's become of this so-and-so, tell them I'm somewhere looking for the end of that long white line. Tell them I'm somewhere looking for the end of that long white line. New York City, Old St. Joe, Albuquerque, New Mexico. This old rig is humming and rolling, she's doing fine. If somebody wants to know what's become of this so-and-so, tell them I'm somewhere looking for the end of that long white line. Tell them I'm somewhere looking for the end of that long white line. New York City, Old St. Joe, Albuquerque, New Mexico. This old rig is humming and rolling, she's doing fine. If somebody wants to know what's become of this so-and-so, tell them I'm somewhere looking for the end of that long white line. Tell them I'm somewhere looking for the end of that long white line. Won't be around this old town anymore for a long, long time. Gonna hit the road, start looking for the end of that white line. Gonna hit the road, start looking for the end of that long white line. All right, thank you, y'all. This next one is actually, uh, an original song, uh, that I wrote, and I actually got to record it last week in, uh, my cousin's best friend's studio, so that was really cool. Thanks, Ryan. Uh, this is called Beneath the Smoke Rings, so here we go. On the outskirts of Houston, as the cold wind blows, the rain fell hard and washed out the roads. My skin feels thin, I feel every last drop. There's a last gust of wind, I know I can't stop. Beneath the smoke rings, my dreams are turning to dust. They left all alone to weather and rust. And I'm coming home now, thank God above. Beneath the smoke rings are the real things that I've learned to love. I'm all packed to leave as the locals pass me by. My body feels weary and my eyes are getting tired. The last call is called and everyone starts to cry. As I'm forced to go home, I'm forced to find a ride. Beneath the smoke rings, my dreams are turning to dust. They left all alone to weather and rust. And I'm coming home now, thank God above. Beneath the smoke rings are the real things that I've learned to love. I'll cross the state line with the whole of my soul to continue on east, then I'll make it back home. The road seems longer than when I began. Once I make it back home, I'll never leave again. Beneath the smoke rings, my dreams are turning to dust. They left all alone to weather and rust. And I'm coming home now, thank God above. Beneath the smoke rings are the real things that I've learned to love. Beneath the smoke rings, my dreams are turning to dust. They left all alone to weather and rust. And I'm coming home now, thank God above. Beneath the smoke rings are the real things that I've learned to love. Thank you. All right, this next song is one everybody will be familiar with, it's Landslide by Fleet Will Mac, and, um, I'm a really big Stevie Nicks fan, so I always try to work around to, uh, myself. Took my love to bed down. Climbed a mountain and I turned around. And I saw a reflection in the snow-covered hills, telling landslide bring them down. Oh, mirror in the sky, what is love? Can a child with my heart rise above? Can I sail through the changing ocean sides? Can I handle the seasons of my life? Well, I've been afraid of changing, 'cause I built my life around you. And time makes you bolder, even children grow older, I'm getting older too. It's my love to bed down.
Pike County Commission Regular Meeting is now in order. You'll bow your head. Heavenly Father, we just thank you for the beauty of the day and the daily gifts that you give us, so many of it, and a lot of them we just take for granted. And we just want to take a moment, Father, to say thank you. And now, Father, give us the wisdom that we need to do the business of the people of Pike County in a manner pleasing unto thy sight, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic whereby we stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let the record show that all commissioners are present at this meeting. Approving of the minutes from the last meeting.
Salute.
Motion by Commissioner Barr. Second by Commissioner Copeland, all in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Motion carries. One, one sustained, okay? Wasn't here. Uh, motion, uh, need a motion to approve the claims?
Salute.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson. Question? Second by Commissioner Wright.
I thought he was, I thought he was trying to.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, on the, on the minutes, I was out too.
Okay, we'll sustain Commissioner Wright as well. So, uh, we have a motion out of separate to approve the claims, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Engineer's report.
Mr. Chairman, we request that you suspend the rules for, um, the equipment request and the spot leveling project.
Okay, we can do the rule suspending under one motion, and then we'll vote on separately. So the first motion will be to suspend the rule.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Barr.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wright, roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Motion carries. And now we need a motion to approve the equipment.
Salute.
Motion by Commissioner Wright.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barr, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries on the spot level.
Salute.
Motion by Commissioner Harris.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wright, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, next we have, uh, the application resolution for the C D B G project.
Okay. Need a motion to adopt the resolution made by Commissioner Wright.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson, all in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And lastly, we recommend, um, the award of project number P C P P five thirty-nine nineteen to the low bidder wiregrass construction company.
Salute.
Motion by Commissioner Harris.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Copeland, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all we have.
Thank you, sir.
Sir, thank you.
Do you amend?
The only thing I have is, uh, requesting approval from you tonight for the fifteen dollar expenditure to the Southeast Alabama, South Central Alabama Development Authority for the hazardous mitigation plan.
Need a motion for that.
Salute.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Copeland, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Uh, does any commissioner have anything to add at this time? Okay, Administrator's report, please.
Okay, under the Administrator's report, uh, do you want to go ahead and suspend the rules and accept the, uh, to vote on the three items that are under Administrator's report? It's the appointment of two, to the EMS, uh, Deputy Chief Curtis Shaver with the City of Troy Fire Department, batti- batti- Battalion, I can't get it out. Battalion Chief Mike Rhodes with the City of Troy Fire Department. They both live out in the county.
I make the motion, motions.
All right, well, we're going to have three, so we got personnel and budget amendments that we have to suspend the rules for. So if it's okay to amend your motion to suspend the rules for all three items?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. I need a motion first. Mr. Barr, second, and by Commissioner Johnson, roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Now for the Southeast Alabama Emergency Medical Services Council, would be Mike Rhodes and Curtis Shaver.
Salute.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Copeland, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. There you go, chief, we thank y'all for your service on that, appreciate it.
Hey, the second item will be personnel, be the, uh, accept the resignation of Ms. Courtney Brown in the commission office.
Motion by Commissioner Wright.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson, all in favor? Any opposed?
Yes.
I kind of, if I can vote up, it's two.
Do that, just. And then for the budget amendments?
Yes, and that'll be the one that we need to fix the transfer amount for the, uh, jail court cost and then the transfer of the sixty thousand dollars for the spot leveling that y'all have prayed for.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Copeland, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
Hey, the last item I have will, is a funder the, uh, current business, and it's the surplus equipment for the sheriff's department.
Okay, that's already on there, so we can go with that. Motion by Commissioner Barr, second, and by Commissioner Wright, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
That is all I have. Our next commission meeting's March twenty-third.
Questions for the Administrator? Thank you, ma'am. Closing comments, Commissioner Wright? Mr. Barr?
I have one.
Mr. Copeland?
I think everybody's been working hard trying to keep things open during all this flood, and Herb trying to keep us on top of what's going on, uh, with, uh, hopefully nothing around here, but thank you for trying to stay on top of that and keeping us up to date.
Commissioner Harris?
That's the same thing, because the chair said, you know, and I had tried to get, I didn't know who to call, that's why I called McKenzie, and she told me who to start working with, so she filled me in on it and, uh, just keep up the good work and please let us know.
Thank you. Commissioner Johnson?
No comment.
Okay, that's next, come before the commission at this time, I need a motion to adjourn.
Somebody?
Motion by Commissioner Barr.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wright, Robert Root, we are adjourned.
I'm going to put this on.